A little after 9:30, we'll call the meeting to order.
Thank you.
The meeting is now in order. We'll have an invocation by Pastor Paul Chalata from Basota Lutheran Church in Westby. I think it's Chelton. Chelton, I'm sorry.
There we go. Well, good morning, Chair members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to, yeah, to be here to ask the Lord's blessing on you as you do this business. I do want to show really quickly just my motivation for praying for you as I'm asked to do an invocation. And I would share that motivation just from a few verses here. And we find this in First Timothy 1, Chapter 2. First of all, then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, maybe not kings, but high positions here, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth. For there is one God, and there is one mediator between God and man, the man Jesus Christ. And so, in obedience to the Lord and our Savior, and in recognition that we do desire to live peaceful and quiet lives, I would pray for you if you would bow with me. Heavenly Father, thank you that you have revealed yourself to us in your creation. Thank you that you've revealed yourself to us in your word. And what I do thank you that you have set in place those who would act as authorities and those in positions of responsibility. And so today, we do pray that you would guide them, that you would guide the decision-making process of this board. May it be shaped by wisdom that you would give. May they serve in this role in such a way that our community, that our lives would be blessed, and that we might honor you as well in it. And so we ask your blessing on this board meeting in the name of our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. We'll stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America.
Meeting been properly noticed? Oh, this agenda was properly posted, yes. A roll call. District 1, Bytlick.
Here.
District 2, Semke.
Here.
District 3, Gady.
Here.
District 4, Bringey.
Here.
District 5, Ofti.
Present.
District 6, Pedredy.
District 7, Miham Stru.
District 8, Egan. Plus, he's online. I don't think he's coming. District 9, Olson. District 10, Easterday. District 11, Jacobson. District 12, Henry. District 13, Taylor. District 14, Yitri. District 15, Schweiger. District 16, Wilson. District 17, Muller. District 18, Mitchell. District 19, Stanek. 18 present and one absent. Motion to excuse Dave, Kelly, John. All in favor, aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the January 18, 2024 meeting. Any addition or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have motion to approve? Martha, Allison, all in favor, aye. Aye, oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Audience, the visitors. Anybody online or in the audience wish to speak? Start on the left and work our way that way. Ma'am, you in the back?
Each of you need to sign in and put your address, state your name. Thanks.
Am I on? Oh, yeah. My name is KJ Jacobson. I'm a resident of Vernon County. I live in Verona. I am here to speak mostly to ask questions. I am not in favor of the expansion at this time. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions. So my first questions are financial, and I did send all of you my own analysis. And I don't know, I did send it to one of you earlier, and it didn't get through. Did you receive, did any of you receive my email that I sent last night? Okay, I just wanted to make sure technically that it got through. So so what I sent you are numbers up to 2022 because they can all be verified. They are totally accurate per the audit statement and the DNR tonnage reports. However, I've seen various numbers for 2023 that raise questions in my mind. The most recent numbers showed a small profit on the landfill portion of the enterprise fund and a small loss on the recycling portion. But what is, they were just aggregate numbers. You can't compare them. You can't verify them. I'm wondering where the $400,000 insurance monies fit in there? And also, if the equipment that that insurance money was for has been disposed of on the books, and was it at a significant loss? So those are, those are my, and then my other question is, I've gotten conflicting information, and I have made an open records request to the DNR, but they said it might be a couple of weeks. Are you, have you received information about your escrow fund and whether or not you are in compliance with the long-term closure cost financial assurance rules? So those are my financial questions. My, my questions about the landfill itself, I've read a significant part now of the feasibility report. There is no mention of any risk. There's no analysis of any risk. In fact, if you search on the word risk, it doesn't exist in that 2,300-page report. So my question is, why is there no risk analysis of potential, not existing, not proven, but potential adverse impacts to the groundwater, both in terms of economics and in terms of the environment? There is tons of information, if you just bother to look, that landfill liners eventually do leak. And the feasibility report is written as if that's not even a possibility. So I would ask you, why does the DNR require 40 years of monitoring the wells around the landfill, which, by the way, there's lots of evidence that that is not sufficient monitoring? Why, if there was no chance of leakage, why do you have to monitor for 40 years? The other question I have is, why are you not doing some minimal testing for PFAS? A whole lot of information has come out in the last couple of years. It's known that the EPA is, is in the process of developing regulations for all kinds of regulations concerning PFAS. Why aren't you ahead of the game? Why aren't you monitoring for PFAS in the monitoring wells and also in some of the neighbors' wells? Why are you refusing to do that? It's not that costly. Is that? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Good morning. I'm Kelvin Rodolfo. I'm an environmental scientist and geologist. I've spoken before this board before. It seems that you folks are being told that even if the landfill leaks, God forbid, and polluterographers, the DNR says they can be washed clean. That is simply not true in western Wisconsin. A karst rock can itself be the aquifer, as it is in eastern Wisconsin. In Door, Brown, and other counties along Lake Michigan, the karstic Niagara and dolomite aquifer near the surface has large cavities that water can quickly enter and flow through rapidly. If polluted, the aquifer can possibly be cleaned, flushed out. But this is unusual. More carbonly, as it is in the Driftless, well water comes out of sandstone aquifers layers 100 to 1,000 feet below the surface. The water is held in tiny pores between grains of sand. With fractures and cavities, the prairie duchy and dolomite karst rock at the surface of the Driftless on which the landfill sits is not an aquifer. Instead of storing rainfall or snowmelt, it allows it to flow quickly down through it to seep down into our sandstone aquifers. That is why our well water is already so polluted with agricultural nitrate. Escaping landfill leachate, garbage juice, would enter the aquifers the same way. Water can flow only inches or a foot per day through a sandstone. Ask Mr. Kemp how he would clean a sandstone soaked with dirty water deep beneath the surface. Mr. Good Gady assures the county board that it is common for DNR to ask for more information. And this is true. But in all my years as an environmental scientist, I have never seen such a damning assessment. My annotated excerpt of DNR's December 19, 2023 incompleteness letter, which I sent to you on December 26, is a matter of public record. DNR has not refuted any part of it, and Mr. Mark Peters' February 1, 2024 memorandum of additional comments does not ameliorate the situation in any way. I emailed my comments to documents that you have been warned of the risk. When the landfill expansion begins to harm people, authorities will seek to assign blame. By improving the landfill, you're accepting responsibility. Thank you for your attention.
My name is Michael Donsky. My wife and I own several businesses in Vernon County, and we are for the expansion of the landfill because one of our business services low-income people. And without that, the garbage would be hauled out of the area, and it would be very expensive to do that. So I thank you for doing that. Secondly, I've hauled leachate out of your landfill here, and I've hauled it out of Monroe County landfill in the 90s. Them pits, the pipes, and everything is tapered towards the tank. As long as you stay ahead of the leachate pumping it out continuously, they're safe. It's, you know, they're very safe, in my opinions, because all the leachate is draining towards the tank, and there isn't much sitting inside of there. So it's just safe, and I just thank you for doing that. And we've been hauling garbage up to the landfill there. Stacy is very easy to work with, very cooperative, and thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Bratnaber, and I'm a resident of Verona here in Vernon County. The more I learn about the landfill expansion proposal, the more my concerns are growing. Number one, I'm concerned about the risk of contaminating our priceless drinking water. The occurrences of landfills contaminating water are not infrequent. Among pollutants seeping from landfills into groundwater are PFAS, the toxic chemicals that we've all been reading about in the headlines so often these days. Contamination of our drinking water will damage our health and our property values at a cost the county could never repay. Number two, I'm concerned about the financial feasibility of the proposal, of the proposed expansion. It's my understanding that the landfill has operated in the red for nine out of the past 10 years, staying afloat to the detriment of the required fund that is supposed to be maintained for the future closing and care of the landfill. Financial analysis of the expansion has reportedly been brushed off the agenda of the infrastructure committee more than once. Is there something being hidden? Number three, I'm concerned about the idea that bigger is better. I question whether the county is capable of managing a larger landfill business when it appears we are unable to make ends meet with the existing landfill. The idea of expanding so we can bring in more waste to collect more fees seems like a losing proposition, especially since the closing fund is already greatly underfunded. I don't have an exact number, but I believe it's something to the tune of half a million dollars. If our landfill is closed, we'd have to ship our solid waste elsewhere, and that would cost more. But there's a silver lining to that. It would be a big incentive to shop smarter, to waste less, and to recycle and use more. All these are good things that need to happen to save our beautiful Wisconsin and our planet. This community has the talent and the will to explore and compare and choose the best waste management solution for our future. Many communities across the country have already built smart waste management solutions that we can learn from and copy. This community deserves close scrutiny of the proposed expansion by a third-party expert. If it's a winning proposition, you can share the details and win back public confidence. Please do not rush through this proposal for the landfill expansion. There's far too much at stake.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be brief. I know you have a long meeting. I just, my name is George Wilber. I'm from the town of Whitestown. Actually, I'm the chair of the town of Whitestown. I'm here to thank you for supporting the expansion of the Vernon County landfill. This is an important government function that all the towns, many of the villages and cities rely on, to dispose of our waste safely and economically. I know you're getting a lot of flack from this. A lot of people aligned with this international company that bought out a local company and wants to make a profit on our trash. But it's going to cost us if they do. I urge you to resist these efforts to privatize our landfill. Keep it in operation. I know many people live in the backyard of that landfill, and they're concerned. I am too. But I know that you, the DNR, of course, will ensure that we have a safe and effective landfill. And I know that you're working on that, and I appreciate that very much. Also, I want to mention, I appreciate the recycling services that comes with our operations. This is really important as well. It's reduced, reducing our waste, and that's the important steps to take to making this a long-term proposition. So again, oh, I might add to them, Secretary of the Wisconsin Towns Association chapter, the Vernon County chapter, the Wisconsin Towns Association. And I can say that it's near unanimous support of the towns for this expansion of the landfill. We really need this to happen, and we thank you for your support. Someone else could come up and speak, and I'll sign in.
Thank you for listening to us. So many people giving so much important information and opinions from a large body of concerned citizens.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Maggie Mallette, and I live in Verona. I, when discussing this issue in Vernon County with a friend of mine and former resident for about 20 years, John Drew, he got, became very excited, telling me he used to be part of the landfill when Gil Free was running it. And the reason why he became excited was because he's very interested in a technology that is widely used in Europe now. That's called carbon capture technology. And it's quite a science, and I'm very recent to it, so I can't illuminate a lot of details on it for you. But what I have gleaned is that it's being used all over Europe, and the Biden administration actually has a $2.6 billion grant money funding for communities for carbon capture-type technologies. And this technology can produce energy. It captures methane that the landfill produces and carbon, and that it's getting better all the time for the kind of waste it produces, a liquid waste. And maybe we're too small for a technology like this, but maybe combined with other communities, it also produces jobs, energy, and an economy. So perhaps it's an answer. Perhaps it's worth looking into before we look at the risks, and perhaps there's even money for it, for the community, or in collaboration with other communities. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I am Monica Matos, a new resident of District 13. I've been making an effort to understand all sides of this very complex issue. However, in full disclosure, I must admit my bias. I moved to Verona because I fell in love with the awe-inspiring ancient land of the Driftless region and the amazing people who call it home. Knowing that water contamination is a worldwide issue, I guess I shouldn't have been surprised. But somehow, I thought, because of its unique standing, the leadership in the Driftless area would make it a top priority to protect and preserve the unique environment that exists here and draws so many to the area. Indeed, I learned that the designers and engineers of the landfill did go above and beyond minimum standards, which is certainly commendable and very much appreciated. But learning of the very real threat to the watershed, I was taken aback. Because we live in a society that uses the term "the almighty dollar," I at first expected that the environment was being put at risk because it was the source of millions of dollars of revenue. But to find out that the landfill is not even a profitable enterprise is what confuses me most. Please correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but I simply can't comprehend why there's a push to expand a business that is currently operating at a loss to further jeopardize our invaluable resources. I say further jeopardizes because we all know that pristine water belongs sadly to a bygone era. The feasibility study addresses threats to water contamination, but with what I found to be less than reassuring language, some bordering on doublespeak. For instance, in Section 2.5.2, it says, "A majority of the wells located within 300 feet of the proposed expansion area show no to minimum impacts." And then the next sentence says, "There are seven parameters that are found to exceed limits and probably present, represent false positives." In Section 4.9, it says, "Parameters exceed regulatory limits within several wells at Vernon County landfill. Exemptions to select groundwater quality standards have been requested and approved by the W DNR." And in 4.10, it says, "No groundwater quality impacts associated with the solid waste disposal operations have been identified. The proposed expansion should not adversely impact groundwater quality." That is just not reassuring language. On page 569, both SEH consultant and DNR's hydrologist acknowledged the nature of the karst geology, but neither expressed this being a dire concern. And my question is, is reaching dire levels a requirement to take action, especially when dire concern and assistance means irreversible? Wouldn't prevention of disasters be more prudent? Cherokee, Cherokee County, Georgia paints the disturbing portrait of what an unforeseen problem with the landfill could look like in Vernon County. A PBS report states, "What was once a small crack in the middle of the landfill has widened into a 1,000-foot-long ravine last September. Odors from exposed waste spread for miles into posh subdivisions and over family farms. Uncontrolled leachate liquid formed when water mixes with decomposing waste flowed out of the landfill site into a nearby creek. The damage from the crack broke the company's equipment that was designed to monitor how much toxic gas was in the air." The executive director of the Coussa River Basin Initiative stated, "There's a desire to believe these landfills are engineered where there aren't going to be surprises." If there were to be unforeseen issues, it would have a devastating effect on Vernon County, which has over 200 organic farms, a total tourism impact of $73 million, the major drivers of which are outdoor recreation and local food, and a $1.6 billion trout fishing industry. So with all due respect, people are not coming to Vernon County to see the landfill. Please help residents understand how an Please help residents understand how an unprofitable enterprise is worth risking the lifeblood in more ways than one of an already economically distressed region, and what of the cost of increased medical expenses for negative impacts? Is it even appropriate to put a dollar amount on human health and well-being?
The time has expired.
Thank you for your opportunity.
Anybody else online, or Tom?
Hope to be able to speak more than four minutes, but I guess you can't see by county let to somebody else. Is it possible to speak more than four minutes today to seven minutes? I would, I would ask. Yeah, okay. Well, I've, I've, believe me, I've been, I've been preparing, trying to trim this down.
Four minutes.
Four minutes is it? Wow. DNR's incompleteness determination is an opportunity for you guys to just press pause. The economics don't pan out. The DNR questions the, the initial acceptance rate at the landfill. Do you know what that means? That's tipping fees. They say that they may be over double what they actually are. They go on to, and I quote, "The latest trend is declining waste at the landfill." You guys, this is all about income, budget. If you have, if you've got 8,000 tons coming to this landfill, you cannot make it work and service debt. Please, they called attention to that in the needs portion, and you know that this document here that you got in front of you, these are audited numbers, one year out of 10. It's shown black ink. And you're going to finance this thing and borrow millions? It doesn't make sense. I know that you say it's an enterprise operation, but enterprise operations are made to operate like business, where depreciation is an expense and where you don't shuffle, and if it isn't making money, you don't invest millions. Yet, it's really unfathomable how you can decide to invest millions if something's losing money. So you have heard from your financial professionals to please step back and take a look at the recent past and the expenses, the cost of going forward, and it's been ignored by this body. Your own higher financial professionals request this. I just, I don't under, you got fractured and preferential flow in the dolostone, and no matter what Brian of SEH is going to come up here and say, that document so thoroughly questions the deo-technical information provided, that they, they go on to say in the document you have in front of you, first sentence of, of the second paragraph, "Generally, there are a number of gaps in the geologic and hydrologic information, and in the hydrogeologic information presented with a feasibility report." Go on to say, "Groundwater flow information presented here appears to be largely interpreted, given a number of data points." You don't have enough data points, that's why they're saying you've got to dig more boreholes. You're talking about throwing tens and hundreds, perhaps, of thousands of dollars, trying to, trying to address their incompleteness determination. One note here, Valley Meadows landfill in 80, in 98, 99, received an incompleteness determination with the same very language questioning the karstic underpinnings. They spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to address this and ultimately had to pull their application. It's the same language, guys. It's the same language about, about this karst. So I understand we have a responsibility to deal with our own solid waste, but our responsibility is to do so responsibly. Expanding a landfill on karst, the World Bank won't loan money for landfills on karst. And you guys want to borrow millions to put, to expand a landfill on karst? That's their rules, they won't do it. Incomprehensible. At least ask, what more has to be done to address the incompleteness determination? And can they be certain of this? How many tens of thousands of dollars in more boreholes and, and real data points? We're talking real data points here. So they, and, and how much is it going to cost? How long is it going to take? Don't throw good money after bad. It's an opportunity to simply press pause. You don't have to decide not to go, but back up and get your, and get an audited look at the way the books really run when you're not borrowing internally and shuffling money, like they like to say you're in the black. You're not. One out of 10 years, a, you know, you, you just don't invest in, in a business that's, that's losing money, even if you are, you know, if you're an enterprise fund, look at it like a business. This is a really irresponsible decision if you go forward when the books don't add up. The numbers are apparent. You got them right here. How can you ignore red ink in all but one year? Please, just press pause and, and get an objective look. You've got time, the airspace is not being filled up. GFL's out of the picture, so your airspace has got a lot more lax time here. Take a look.
Anybody else in the audience or online wish to speak? Any announcements?
I can introduce Molly Bone. If I murdered that, I'm sorry. Bonn? The field representative for Representative Van Orden.
Thank you. Thank you for having me at your guys' county board meeting. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am Molly Bonn. Sorry. I am a field representative for Congressman Derek Van Orden. The previous field representative that worked in Vernon County, Mary Carney, was promoted to our district director of operations, so now I will represent Congressman Van Orden in this county. Little bit about myself, born and raised in Wisconsin and love the Driftless Southwest Wisconsin region. Traveled the whole state, and we definitely live in the best part of Wisconsin. So happy to be here, happy to serve you guys. We are constituent service first office, so if you are having a trouble with a federal agency or any of your constituents, please have them reach out to our office. That is a main focus of our district office. That includes passport issues with State Department, social security, VA issues. Last year, we closed over 800 cases and got nearly over, over $500,000 back to our constituents through our casework team. So please utilize us, that's what we're there for. One example, we were able to get two years of social security back pay for a constituent that was seeking help for years, and we were able to get that done within two weeks. So please reach out to our office, share that information. You can go to our website. We have an office in La Crosse as well, and I hold mobile office hours every couple of months as well. So this year, continuing to work on the farm bill is Congressman Van Orden's on the agriculture committee, introducing the Dairy Pride Act, other Dairy Fitness Innovation Act. He's also on the Veterans Affairs Committee as a retired Navy SEAL of 26 years. It's very important to him. So working hard on legislation to support our veterans and their mental health. Transportation and infrastructure, he sponsored, co-sponsored the Build Act of 2023, which would authorize new grants for small and rural public agencies to upgrade local law enforcement and fire department facilities with fewer 50, to serve fewer than 50,000 residents. He also was original co-sponsor of the Protecting Infrastructure Investment Rural American Act. They all have long names or acronyms, so I apologize. But this would simply remove the barriers for rural communities to receive funding for the rural road grants, because right now it's a population of $200,000 or 200 people or less, 200,000 people or less, and this would bring it down to 50,000, so that you guys would actually be able to compete for these grants. Clean water has been a major focus of Congressman Van Orden as well. He was able to secure two PFAS for filtration-related provisions for Eau Claire and the Town of Campbell in La Crosse, as well as co-sponsoring a PFAS Act and a Healthy H2O Act. Lastly, he recently co-sponsored the Social Security Fairness Act of 2023 to repeal, repeal provisions that reduce the social security benefits for individuals that receive other benefits, such as pensions from state or local government. So he's staying busy, lots to, to keep up on. I would encourage you to go to our website, vanorden.house.gov, to subscribe to our newsletter to get updates. And again, please reach out. I'll be here for the whole meeting if you want to talk after. So thank you again.
Hey, we have an update progress report of the Vernon County landfill expansion. Stacy Bryant Kent, the landfill engineer, and Melanie, the hydrologist.
Lauren? For people that are here, and you spoke, so many of your people are leaving right now. It would be in their best interest to listen to this information as we do. You might want to call them back, because this is important stuff. And I saw about eight people leave.
Oh, and I get this. Okay. So good morning. We're here to give an update today on the land, on the solid waste recycling department, the landfill. I am accompanied today by, Bobby's going to be presenting historical financial information to you guys. I'm going to speak a little on the long-term care enclosure. And then Brian Kent, the project manager and engineer for the landfill expansion, is going to present in a company moment with Melanie today, the senior hydrologist, or hydrogeologist, sorry, could say that wrong every single time I try to speak it. Okay, Bobby, would you like to start with the sheet that you circulated to the board?
Good morning. Everyone has received quite a bit of information going back and forth on our financials, so I thought I would put together a summary of a, just a brief overview of a quick analysis, so you're able to have a better picture of where we're at. So the numbers that you have in front of you today, that is the sheet that is up on the screen as well. For the audience, there are copies of that on the back table if they would like to have any of that information. So these are directly from our audited financials. So this is just a snapshot of one of our audited financial statements, particularly the operating loss, and that has been an item that's been up for discussion for several weeks. Part of our operating loss, income loss calculation is depreciation, and it's been said that that depreciation is not a monetary value. So it does, it is a value that relates to our net position, but it's not a cash value. That is correct. So when we're looking at our operating income loss, we do calculate depreciation into that factor, because that is a business item that any business, public or private, does have to take into consideration when they're looking at their retained earnings, their owner's equity. So for us, it's called net position because it's an enterprise fund. So when you're looking at it and your business owners, you want to look at that as your retained earnings or your owner's equity within your business. If we did not take out the depreciation, so if we looked at our depreciation and we took that out and decided not, we're not depreciating any assets, which is not a well-thought-out feasibility financial plan going forward as a business, we would look a little better. However, because we are operating as a business, we are an enterprise fund, we do have fiduciary responsibilities, we are going to include depreciation in our amortization in our operating loss. Whether or not it's a budgeted item is a moot point. We can not budget for it, we're still going to see it in our actuals. These are actuals, these are not budget. Just a quick, at the, towards the bottom, there's year-over-year analysis percentages, so that's growth or decline from year to year. So when we're looking at it, that it's your revenue and your expenses broken out year to year, growth or decline. And then at the very bottom is your cost-revenue ratio. So a cost-revenue ratio is how much we're spending to make a dollar. So if we're spending 79 cents in 2014 to make a dollar, that's what those actuals represent for a cost-revenue ratio. So I just wanted to just simply break this out, so it's easier and more informative than looking through our audited financials. I know that's not necessarily the greatest read in the world, so we wanted to break that out for you, so you're able to hear from the finance department as to where we're sitting right now. John?
So for 2023, we have a, our revenue is down 23.5%, or I can't make this, 23.57%. Maybe Stacy needs an answer. Why is it down so much? I think I know. But why is it down so much this year or last year, and what are we going to do to prevent that from the following year? Because that is a big number that we just lost.
Right now, 2023, that is volume-related. So we saw a decrease in volume, a really sharp decrease after October. Going forward, you guys approved me a 2024 budget of about half of this operating numbers that you're seeing here as part of the 2024 budget process. Going forward, we're going to have to develop a plan to get some of Vernon County, to generate waste volume back to our Vernon County landfill.
It's clear for everybody is that how many dollars of Vernon County tax levy is involved in the recycling and solid waste?
Right now, at this point, the landfill has not received any property tax levy, and that could change depending on operational plans and financial management going forward to fund operations and capital items.
Martha?
Bobby, could you clarify on the 2023? There was a piece of equipment that burned, and we received an insurance check. Is the insurance check included in the revenue?
In the, in the 2023 column that is unaudited, we're still working on closing our books. So in the, in the row labeled "other operating income revenues," that $424,000, part of that is the insurance check for the insurance claim on that piece of equipment.
So I do just kind of want to, because I've heard this before, like, I don't think you can fault that for being an asset. Like, if it's an asset when it's an equipment, then it should be allowed to be an asset on a financial report. So I feel like sometimes we're saying, like, you can't claim that, because that wouldn't be a true number, but if you're going to run like a business, like you're saying, you would claim that as an asset. It would be on your expense group, it would be an income.
It would be, it's cash. Yeah. So it would be on our balance sheet.
I think, I've heard, like, I just, you can't, like, have it both ways. It's got to, anyway. I do have a question, because I hear, and I know a lot of people here are, and thank you for coming to the call, District 13. Some of you haven't heard before the vote. I'm listening, especially when it comes to safety. I'm listening. The financial piece, I do have a little different view on it. I know enterprise funds should be close to breaking even, and we should run it like a business. It's also a service that the county provides. So if I'm reading this right, it's looking with depreciation that $200,000 a year. Am I reading that right? That's what we're running as a loss? And Vernon County has 10,000 residents, roughly. Am I right about that number? 30, oh, well, then my number gets really much better. I knew 10 didn't sound right. It's like, that can't be right. Broke has five. Anyway, well, then I'd do math differently, but that is a very small piece. Like, you are breaking even then if you put, break it down by how much it costs to handle garbage per individual. So I don't, I'm only offering that because many people believe this is a utility that should be offered as a service to their residents. That being said, I'm not a service to their residents. That being said, I'm not, not listening to the safety concerns that are out there, and more needs to be answered to move forward. So, thanks.
And with depreciation, you'll notice there's some fluctuation between just under 200,000 and above. So what is happening in those particular years? That's when we're purchasing new assets. So every time we purchase a new piece of equipment, every time we add to the, the expansion pieces, that our depreciation will go up because we are now depreciating a brand-new asset.
So replacing that piece of equipment, if I understand correctly, that's about $800,000?
Depending on what kind of model and specs are looked at for what's needed at the landfill, it can be in excess of 800,000. Compactors are quite expensive.
So when she talks about assets, and we've put the asset value of that in the revenue here, the cost of that piece of equipment then, is that going to be put under expenses? Or are you going to depreciate that?
We would depreciate it over the life of the asset. And the depreciation schedule we would follow is based on the state of Wisconsin recommendation for life of our assets. We do a straight line.
So is there a plan for where that money will come if it's already been expended for expenses in 2023?
So we have, so when you're saying the rev, the money has been expended, so I just want to clarify for everyone here. So the insurance check, we did receive, we did record it as revenue. It was a, an insurance recovery. For when we purchase a new piece of equipment, a new compactor, that would become a capital asset on our books, so part of capital outlay. So we would show that on our assets as well as our capital outlay. So when we're going to purchase that, we, we should have the funds available. And if we don't, we would borrow them from someplace, whether it be the general fund, a loan, debt service. So when we're already using that insurance check as part of our operating to fill the hole for expenses for the year, it does become an issue where we're going to find those funds. And that's a discussion that will happen coming up when we're getting ready to do an RFP for those bids for that piece of equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I went a little farther. Okay, I'm going to stop fight. We're both hitting buttons. So at the last county board meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the long-term care enclosure of, of the landfill. So I wanted to speak to that today. After the January meeting and the 2022 audit report, seemed to be a lot of confusion on the status of the landfill long-term care enclosure accounts. I want to start by explaining what these accounts are and what they're for. So Vernon County has two separate escrow accounts currently with People State Bank here in Baroqua. One of these is for the closure of the landfill. The other is for the long-term care of the landfill after it is closed. At last month's Board of Supervisors meeting, there was some confusion on the liability versus the asset on the balance sheet of the solid waste department. One, I want to remind you that those were 2022 financials. We are in February of 2024. So they're a little over a year old now. Currently, the total value of the escrow accounts with People State Bank is $3,815,653.56 as of December 31. The required balance with the Department of Natural Resources for the end of 2023 is $3,835,000, $35,696.55. That is short $20,042.99 of what the DNR requires us to be at. The total liability on the balance sheet for the long-term care enclosure is the estimated cost we need, we would need at the time of closure. The county, at the point of the 2022 numbers, had three years remaining to earn interest in deposit funds and to fulfill the account prior to closure. Since the 2022 audit, the long-term care enclosure balance has grown $247,744. The department has made a deposit last year in March of $155,000. The rest is increased interest revenues. Unfortunately, during the years of '21 and '22, the long-term care enclosure escrow accounts, especially in 2022, actually lost money. It cost us $800 to have our money in escrow instead of gain the anticipated interest revenue. Once we learned of this account, that these accounts lost money, Bobby, Karen, and myself went and met with People State Bank and made adjustments to roll our investments into higher-yielding, shorter-term investments. Since this meeting, the long-term care enclosure is generating interest revenue. From June 31 to 2023, to December 31 of 2023, these accounts gained $110,350.51. March 1, we plan to move these investments entirely to the Wisconsin DNR investment pool, which is currently earning over 5% interest. At the time we visited these accounts with People State Bank, we had accounts that were generating like .25%. I think some of them were. Now, since the board has currently voted to move forward with the expansion of the landfill, that changes things with regards to the long-term care and the closure. As part of the plan of operations that you guys approved in October of last year, the long-term care enclosure plan will all be recalculated and redesigned. The expansion is planned to be both a horizontal and a vertical expansion. What this means is we're widening the footprint of the landfill, and that's what this picture is depicting, the purple box is the three phases of the expansion area. The rest to the left is the current active landfill. So we're widening the footprint, about four acres in total. So that allows us the ability to fill that and then up the entire east slope of the current landfill. So we will only actually need to be putting half of the current landfill into closure. And that, that closure wouldn't occur until roughly 2027, '28. And the initial closure plan indicates we will be closing roughly five to 10 acres. And the dotted lines on this picture are depicting the three different phases of closure, or anticipated closure of the landfill after we are, as we are expanding. So this, this first section is kind of the C section to the left side where the dotted line, that is closure one, and that's roughly five acres, about half the landfill. So now, long-term care, since we are not planning on closing currently, we would now not need the full long-term care enclosure funded until the closure of the expansion in roughly 2040, after the 15-year life expectancy of the current, of the expansion. So that will then continue to grow, add deposits as needed during the 15-year future operations of the expansion. That long-term care fund wouldn't be utilized until we actually close the landfill. So again, these numbers are all going to be recalculated with the plan of operations because as you increase, you will, the cost of long-term care will also increase, the cost of closure will increase. But we will be doing it in three separate phases. Instead of the current, if we chose to close at the end of this landfill, we would have to close the entire, the entire landfill footprint, and that would be that closure estimate. Is there any questions? Does that help clarify some of the confusion? The liability that is on the, on our balance sheet per the auditor, that is, so long-term care, they, they estimate an annual cost as to how much every year it's going to cost for us to take care of things like leachate and environmental monitoring that will still continue, general staff if they need to be there. That cost was estimated to be about $74,711. And all these numbers are recalculated every year to account for inflation. That's, I reach out to the DNR every January, February, March, talk to Dustin Shalley and have him re-up those numbers so we can make sure we are in compliance. I received an email from him that there is no concern of us being in non-compliance. I did request if there was any documentation or historical letter sent to the county that we were violating long-term care enclosure. He was unable to find such documents or notifications. And furthermore, so the liability number is that's for the long-term care is that $74,711 times 40 years. Now, we don't need that full number at the point of closure because you're still going to have over $2 million, I believe, is in that account, that particular account currently. That money will then sit there and generate interest over the 40 years. And per the DNR calculations that I just received in January from Dustin, the interest should pay for the annual care through, like, the first 30 years of closure. So just to kind of give you some more information on that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Stacy, you put together all of those numbers. Are you, can you share that with us, whether it's in a chart, whether it's in a spreadsheet, your report from today or whatever? But can we get those numbers in black and white from you?
Yeah, if you want, I can forward them to you. I don't have them here with me. But I would be happy to forward the balance. I get an Excel spreadsheet from People State Bank for the balance of the two accounts. And then I can share with you the calculation Excel spreadsheet that I received from the DNR.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking at this. And thank you for coming, Bill. If you don't know who Bill is, Bill represents GSL. So looking at this fill rate, and for my terms on the board, I remember when some of these things happened, about three terms in fact. And there was a time when we had many different haulers, and people would come to our landfill. Then there was a time that we are pretty much in the last couple of years in where Southwest put everybody else out of business, pretty close. Is that correct, Bill? Yeah. Okay, so, and their, and their tipping rate was a certain amount. So it put other people out of business. Now, we had a tipping fee that Southwest was making a profit for us because they were hauling garbage from everywhere, filling our airspace. So with that airspace filling, we are in the predicament that we are in now. Because you filled it. And since then, you knew it, you sold it. And I'm guessing that you have an agreement with GSL, that you worked really hard at filling our landfill, that it would shut, and now it's going to go up there.
Mary?
Well, tell me what part I'm wrong on. I want a clear fact.
This is a board meeting. Don't debate with the audience. Thank you.
So with our loss of revenue, it's because that business sold. We are now starting to get people, different haulers coming in. Personally, I think it's great that we slowed down the flow. Our taxpayers are paying this. Not Monroe, not Crawford, not anywhere else. This is a service for our residents. We have 30,000 residents? Is that what we just said? This is their service. I'm not interested in hauling in a destination landfill. But I am interested in providing a service for our people.
Mary, where?
My question is, Stacy, with this lost revenue, is this a feasible going forward to provide a service in a safest way possible in our geological area? I'm concerned about our geological area. Tell them, I worry about that. But if our landfill is closed, where's everybody going to dump their stuff in sinkholes that isn't done safely? I know that's a lot of questions. These are all the things that are running through my head. People want to know.
So to answer your question, that with the loss of revenue, Vernon County has operated that landfill at anywhere from nine to 15 to the last five years. It went from 15,000 ton a year up over 20 in a year because the borders were opened and outside garbage was allowed to come in. The calculations, the information I gave you, I planned, and the information that I've looked at for future expansion is all wrapped around that 15,000 ton that Vernon County had generated from '93 or from 2000, I believe it was, I'm not even going to say. We have averaged 15,000 ton a year in Vernon County until the borders were opened. So this expansion will survive on 15,000-ton pricing. It's up to, it's, the tipping fee is up to what tipping, what tonnage and how much you guys want to pay. We can, we can do compost, we can do all kinds of things, but all that stuff does cost money, you know? So sky's the limit, but it's how much you want to pay for the, for the sky.
How much was your tonnage last year?
Last year, I believe we were around 15,000 ton.
And with that, that's where we still had a 23% difference in it?
Compared to the year before, yes. Because in 2018, the, the political border was open, and we gained 5,000 ton in a year.
So you take construction waste too?
Yeah.
So like, the county shop, you could take all that waste?
Yep, we are a licensed demolition landfill, yes.
That's probably going to come up later today.
We're, we're getting, we, last year, we were getting the Darrellin Power Plant. We were getting a lot of material from there. We actually took 3,500 ton of coal bottom material for daily cover last year from Darrellin. So we are a licensed demolition and MSW facility.
Okay, I'm bringing it back to a minute because I had a question on the closure and what I keep hearing a number, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So I keep hearing this, like, 900,000. We don't have 900,000. But wouldn't that be if we had to pay for what would be in 40 years?
It would include that.
It would include that. So if we, like, close next year, isn't the, don't, aren't we not that short at all?
If we?
I'm trying to dispel this, like, we are a, a million dollars in the red for our closure cost. And I don't, and, and I know you said all those numbers, but is there, like, less numbers for someone like me?
Okay, so, so, and Bobby, I see you go into your office. If you could print the balance of the escrows, that'd be swell. But between the two accounts, so the closure escrow is roughly, is I think at 17, 1.7 million. The estimated, in today's dollars, number is a, was it a eight? 1.8, yes, sorry. I don't have that information in front of me. I just brought my speech so I wouldn't get off track. But, so with that being said, so the closure is the amount we would need if we close. And we still have, again, another, at current filling capacity, we have a year and a half to two years. The, the long-term care, no, we do not need that full $2 million the day we close the gate. That would, we need an estimated amount that the DNR provides us to start caring for the landfill. And then that fund of $2 million will sit there and generate an interest, in theory, and generate interest and pay for itself and provide the 40 years of long-term care.
So I think I heard if we were to, like, we have 1.7 right now, give or take. If we were to close next year, you'd need 1.8. So it's really a shortfall of $100,000.
For the
And then to get to the other, you're, you're building your, your, it's like an annuity fund that you're building interest to cover those costs in the long term. So this idea that we're short a million dollars, it, that's, that's not totally accurate. I mean,
Correct. And actually, in the numbers you guys were receiving, we're in 2000, from 2022's audit, again, that's over a year and a half old. And in 2022, we did lose money on the escrow. Now we have substantially gained interest revenue just in the six months since we started making adjustments to that. And so I think, I believe it's in a much better place. And, and it's, we are not a million dollars short. Can be done.
Okay, we're still going to have those other people.
Right.
Yes.
We will take a break now. A break has been requested. We'll take a break and be back in five, 10 minutes.
I would, I wanted to say that
I wanted to say that, I wanted to say that.
You probably wanted to say a lot of things.
GFL has a.
You do. This is, this is.
GFL has a statement from.
Okay, we are now back in session. Everybody here? Everybody's here?
It's here. Well, good morning, everyone. I think most of you see me before. Brian Kent with SEH, I'm the project manager for the feasibility and the expansion for Vernon County landfill. Today, I thought it'd be helpful, we thought it'd be helpful to bring in Melanie Nidey, who is our senior hydrogeologist. She's a licensed hydrogeologist in the state of Wisconsin and Minnesota, about 35 years of experience working in solid waste industry compliance, geologic investigation and planning. So, but before we get to Melanie, because I'm sure you have a number of questions as it relates to geology, I just wanted to address a few other things that have been discussed before and perhaps maybe are misinterpretation or just a clarification as it relates to the feasibility, the feasibility study we submitted and the DNR's response for non-completeness. First is, is that, you know, there's been some discussions, I heard it again here, that liners are inevitably going to fail. I mean, I, I hope that that was addressed as.